Good evening and welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, October 22. If you're watching live on Monday, October 22, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is 769-1677. Our next regular meeting, I should have gone to the calendar before I started, is on...
November 12.
Monday, November 12 at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00, again here at 80 Wheeler Avenue. A few announcements to make before we get started with the events of the evening. The first is to remind folks of a bunch of dates that are coming up. The annual Ragamuffin Parade is this coming Saturday, October 27, one of the great days in the Village of Pleasantville. Everybody lines up at BRS at around 10:30.
Yeah, stuff up and away then, right?
And then the parade starts, the parade kicks off downtown Memorial Plaza, marching down Bedford Road at 11 o'clock. And get down to Memorial Plaza, there are lots of fun things to do. And the Halloween events will go on at the same time as we have our farm market in operation. Thanks to the Recycling Committee and a bunch of folks involved in the Halloween costume swap, where lots of folks handed in costumes that were worn in past years and traded them in for something good. So, one of the few occasions when you can leave your life as a devil and come back as an angel.
Okay. Or the other way around.
Or the other way around. I guess it just depends on your mood that day.
Where you are that day.
Also wanted to report that on Monday, October 29, there is a blood drive sponsored by the high school and the voluntary ambulance corps. The Echo Club and the ambulance corps will be pursuing a blood drive on Monday, October 29 from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the Pleasantville High School Gymnasium, collecting both whole blood and double red cells from qualified candidates. So if you are interested and need to know more, you can call 1-800-688-0900 to schedule an appointment to donate, 1-800-933-2566. Or you can register online with a long and complicated link, so I will suggest you go back to the phone number, which is 800-923-2566. So again, high school gymnasium, Monday, October 29. Just before the Ragamuffin Parade is the annual Tina Gambino 5K Run Walk. The race starts at the high school at 9:00 a.m. It's in memory of Tina Gambino, a spirit of generosity. And you can Google that online and that will bring you right to the registration page to sign up to run, to walk, or simply to donate, to help along. And then the folks who run the Pleasantville Community Garden are having a cleanup and garlic planting this Saturday, October 27, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the community garden, which is in the side yard adjacent to St. John's Church on Sunnyside. Unbelievable project. The community garden has generated so much food to be given to food pantries and has led the way to a revival of agriculture in Pleasantville. So if you're in a position to help, that would be much appreciated. I participated, as I have in past years, in one of the weightiest activities of my mayoral life, and that is to judge in the Pleasantville Farm Market Apple Pie Contest, which is one extraordinarily impressively-run operation. Kathy Sable, Ally Serbin, lots of other folks involved. And it was quite a hotly contested event. The person in the two crust pie division won for the fourth consecutive year, so we need to get some more people in there to mix up this juggernaut. But anyway, a great day and beautiful weather could hardly have worked out better. The last thing I wanted to mention is that we had a loss in the Village of Pleasantville last week. Kathy Yale died after a long, long life. Longtime Pleasantville resident and a person who worked for the village as treasurer and as acting administrator back in the 80s and 90s, left a legacy of good humor, goodwill, and professionalism. And her wake and funeral, which occurred last week, drew back to Pleasantville a whole lot of folks who worked with her in that time period and remember her since. And so amid the sadness of that event, it was a happy occasion where it was apparent that Kathy Yale had been not only a force for good, but the kind of person that so many folks wanted to come back and honor at the time of her death. So it felt like a Pleasantville family that extended over multiple generations. And so for all the things we thank Kathy for in her life, we thank Kathy for that at the time of her passing. Other announcements, comments?
I attended, as the liaison, I attended a Pleasantville Strong meeting on the 16th of October. Informative meeting led primarily by Brian Halloran of the BTH Foundation, talking about mental health and especially with their youth and the stress and the pressure that these kids are under and, you know, the types of things that they need to, that they go through. And Joe Colombo at the school spoke about how the school is implementing into its health curriculum a mental health component, and there's a whole structure to that through the state education department, to help kids develop different types of ways of dealing with stress in their lives in order to not get overwhelmed and depressed and so on. So Pleasantville Strong is sort of reaching its tentacles out from instead of only drug, alcohol, tobacco abuse prevention, also mental health, which goes hand in hand with those things. It was really informative meeting. They have meetings once a month for anybody who wants to attend at the high school in the library. The next meeting is November 28, and I encourage you just to become more informed. If you have any interest at all, come on out to the high school library, November 28, 7:00 p.m. for the next Pleasantville Strong Coalition meeting.
Great, thank you, Joe. And then the one thing I wanted to add in the scheduling front is that, as some of you know, we've been grappling with the question of how to manage coyotes in the Village of Pleasantville. We had a public meeting several weeks ago where there was a presentation by Kevin Clark, wildlife biologist from the Department of Environmental Conservation. And we have continued to explore the ways other communities have dealt with these issues and are going to have another public forum on Thursday, November 15, at 7:30 p.m. at the senior center. Among other things, we're going to have a new speaker, Chris Nagy, who is extremely knowledgeable. Thank you, Nicole, for tracking down Chris. Did you want to add anything to that?
He works with the Myenas River Gorge and also with Gotham Coyote Project, and he's apparently one of the nation's experts on coyotes and I think will be a very helpful resource. And we're working on gathering other resources, potentially putting together a sort of one session course on hazing coyotes for those who might be interested in that, and also putting together resources for people who would like individually to contact somebody if they have concerns or questions about coexisting with coyotes.
So, again, just, that's Thursday, November 15, at 7:30 p.m. in the senior center, and we'll have an opportunity to say more about that before the date arrives. So, anything else? All right. Having gone through all of that, our first agenda item is a presentation from Sustainable Westchester on the energy request for proposal results. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Virginia Steinberg, and my colleague Jenna Amundson is handing out a copy of the PowerPoint presentation I'll be addressing this evening.
Yeah, that's good.
Just as a refresher, for those who may or may not be watching and may or may not be aware, Sustainable Westchester, who manages the Westchester Power Program, is a not-for-profit membership organization. And the members are municipalities such as yourself, 42 out of 45 in Westchester County, including the county itself. And the Village of Pleasantville is a member as well, and so therefore residents and small businesses, all of you, are members by extension. And we're very proud of the work and pleased that we're able to work so closely on behalf of member communities to promote sustainability initiatives that, you know, we were listening to some of the dialogue before, the idea is to promote healthy communities where we can all live, work, and play. And here are some of the initiatives that we have. The first one that, of course, we'll be addressing this evening is the Westchester Power Program, the Community Choice Aggregation, or CCA. Community Solar, Solarize, and that's our energy sector. Then we also have a Clean Transportation Division, and that is, you may have heard about our electric vehicle promotions and so forth that are around the county. We have a Heat Smart Initiative, which is going to be geothermal and air-sourced energy efficiencies as well for homeowners. And then finally, we also have a community recycling and composting initiative that many of the municipalities in the county are just participating in, and that will be launching in the next month or so. The Westchester Power Program, how does it work? There are two parts of your utility bill. There's delivery and there's supply. The delivery is managed by the utility. In this case, in Pleasantville, it's ConEd. The supply is the portion that was deregulated almost two decades ago, and that is the program for which we, in which we participate. And at the moment, the supplier's Constellation, and that is also the supplier who won the bidding process that I will explain a little bit later for the next contract phase. And really, the whole idea of it is to provide favorable competitive rates for residents and small businesses and to provide, again, true to our mission as Sustainable Westchester, renewable energy. And we, the way we're able to do that is by leveraging the buying power of over 100,000 households. You know, it's just like anything else. If you buy it in bulk, which basically is what this program does, it buys electricity supply in bulk, then you're able to leverage that and negotiate a much fairer, much more competitive rate. And that's what we were able to do in 24 Westchester Counties, communities, excuse me. An update to the last time that I was here and I spoke is that as through September 30th, the last update I gave you was of June 30th. And of course, we had a very hot summer, ConEd rates, you know, fluctuating, they were all over. We were able to save $14.1 million. And very importantly, again, for our purposes, 339,524 metric tons of carbon dioxide was avoided in the environment. Just to again go back to what I presented earlier, overall, in terms of the Westchester Power Program, you see that as of June 30th, it was $11.9 million. So the numbers I'm going to be presenting you are much more favorable for our program, both on the environmental, importantly, really, on the environmental side in terms of the avoidance as well as the cost savings, because you have a $2.2 million difference that we were able to achieve to save over the period from July, from rather, June 30th. And then in Pleasantville, you'll see the bottom right chart, the savings per account over the, in this case, the 25-month period. You'll see the difference in residential as well as the commercial. And in both cases, this was provided a savings of a few dollars. Again, we always say, this program is not going to make anybody rich. It's not, that's not its purpose. From our mission perspective, the carbon dioxide that is avoided is very importantly tied to the work we do. We understand and respect that municipalities have the right to choose, but that is important in terms of 43 million, 43 tons of carbon dioxide was avoided in Pleasantville, and that's based on the, signing up for the basic supply. What I had worked out the last time was if Pleasantville had chosen the green supply. The difference in the carbon dioxide, the metric tons that would have been avoided, remember the last one, just to go back up, was 43 tons. 8,800 tons of carbon dioxide, the equivalent of over, you know, almost 2,000 cars taken off the road in that 25-month period. And there we do the hypothetical totals in terms of what would have been saved, and it would have been 282,000 for if Pleasantville as a municipality had opted for the green supply. And of course, this does assume that everybody stayed with the green supply. The good news is that for the 2000, the contract that starts in January 1, 2019, we actually cut the commercial rate by two cents. There was a lot of negotiating that went on behind the scenes that I'll explain a little bit later, but that was significant. And for, on the residential side, the rates remained pretty stable. The benchmark that we had used when we started in 2016 was the year prior, 2015 rates in ConEd territory, and the benchmark for any submissions we received had to be below that. So residents, if they opt for the rates that we are suggesting, if they opt to be in the program, are going to be dealing with rates and paying rates from essentially 2015. And I don't know about any of you, but I know very few things in my life that cost me as little as they did in 2015. And that is for two years. So until 2021, they are, your residents and businesses will be paying these rates. We were able to get both the residential and the commercial to be the same. So in the new contract phase, starting January 1, 2019, it's going to be 7.71 cents per kilowatt hour for the basic, or 7.96 cents for green. So it's a .002 cents difference to opt for one or the other. I did want to mention as well, before I go back to that, is what's, I also wanted to mention that for your purposes, so you understand the impact, there are about 2,150 accounts in Pleasantville, of which 254 are commercial and about 1,900 are residential. The process we met through was quite rigorous. We had five weeks in which we sent a request, or the bidding process, we call it an RFP, but for, you know, to simplify it somewhat, it's a bidding process. So first, we had a three-week process where we figured out who the qualifying bidders would be. After that, then, it was a two-week process, at which point these bidders would be able to, you know, run some, crunch some numbers and come up with what they thought they could give us as Westchester Power for these 100,000 account holders. And we, the closing period for that was October 5. Then we had a team that we called together that included our staff and other folks that we, you know, respect who've been part of our program, including supervisors Burdick and Levenberg from Bedford and Austin, respectively, as well as Director of Pace Climate Center, Carl Robago. We went through a lot of numbers, we looked at the proposals, we really looked at what the conditions would be, and then we went back to them and said, sharpen your pencils. This is good, but we want better. And so what ended up happening was Constellation won by a very small margin, and they will remain the supplier for our next program that will start in January. The good news being, we're very familiar with them, they are familiar with us, we understand how they work, and there's not that kind of, that learning curve that you go through when you're dealing with a new business partner. The other change in our program is that New York State has mandated that if we want to say that our energies, electricity supply is renewable, that it comes from New York. The thinking being, before that, we had wrecks that came from around the country, and we were cleaning up a lot of other people's air. And New York State said, that's all well and good, but we'd really like you to clean up New York's air. So we want these wrecks to be homegrown. And in this case, we're going to go with 100% hydro. That's where we also got the best price. And of course, the other is, the other option is basic supply, which has the fossil fuels, the coal, the oil, the gas, nuclear, and an extremely small portion of renewal. And again, we're extremely proud of the fact that we worked very diligently and our vendors worked very diligently to come up with a price that was fixed for two years for both commercial and residential. The next element that's important, and we don't want to lose sight of that, is we are called a community choice aggregation. The community does have a very active role in choosing how they proceed, and the residents and businesses themselves as well going forward. The village chooses the default. So before, you know, people would say, well, you know, we didn't have a choice. Well, you did, or actually, you didn't. Before you moved into Pleasantville prior to this program, you moved in, your electricity supply came from ConEd. If you wanted to go out and proactively find something, you could do so. But as we all know, human nature being what it is, we all tend to be victims of inertia. So unless something really upsets us, we're probably not going to do too much about it. So this program simply changed the default. So now you were in a program that had a fixed rate, and as you saw, the impact both from an environmental as a cost savings perspective has been significant. The residents, then, are enrolled into the default as they would have been into ConEd beforehand. And again, Pleasantville, this is not new for you, you've been in the program. So if no action is taken, the residents fold over. And then at any time, folks can opt out, they can opt up, they can opt down, you know, depending on the choice you make. They can do so. What we have found, which, again, people being who they are, if you, if a municipality chooses one or the other, folks don't typically switch out of that. So it's, you know, if you're looking to make the impact, and I mentioned this the last time, on an environmental scale, the two biggest footprints we leave on the environment are your home, as in your heating, and your, what you drive. So as you notice, at the very beginning, those are our two most active initiatives because we feel that environmentally, these are the most important. The next steps, you are currently deciding, you know, signing the contract and doing that, the notification letter that I referenced earlier goes out to the residents, just telling them, here's the program, here are the options, here's who you can call, and we encourage people to call us, we encourage municipalities to put our number on their website, and they have 30 days. If they don't do anything, they're folded into our program. Again, at any time, they can opt out. They don't have to be part of this program if they really feel strongly that. There are some ESCOs out there that they could be part of that have rates that I'm sure are competitive, et cetera. If they want to do that research, they are welcome to do so. And then the new rates will take effect after their first meter reading of January 1, 2019. The notification letter contains three important components. One is, it outlines these, the supply options, two, the new pricing, and three, how to change your, the choice that the municipality has made. The supply options, if the town has opted for renewable, it just states that, what it is, what the renewable mix is. It also states that, of course, there is always the standard supply if you choose to do that, which is largely non-renewable. The second part, it will state in the letter, the prices for the two options, as you can see, again, it's .002 cents difference. And then thirdly, it will give the number, again, I can't emphasize enough, it's really a benefit to put our number up there. We want, we want to ease the burden on the municipalities in terms of their participation in this program. So it's very important to us that people call, because candidly, if they call either Constellation or ConEd, they may or may not be, get somebody who's familiar with our program, and we've encountered that a lot. Oh, and they can also go on the website, I meant to ask that, mention that as well. We have a website, and they are free to go on there and change as they see fit as well. My comment earlier about putting our number on your website is that we really are local. We are based in Mount Kisco. We have a very small staff, but we do a lot of community outreach and educational programs. So we can be at libraries, we can be at senior centers, we can come here before town board meetings and explain our program and answer questions. And if we don't have the answer, we'll get back to you. I don't profess to know everything about our program, but I can get back to you and I know somebody who can. And then, of course, we take the phone calls. So if you're getting phone calls or you're concerned about that, you know, as I know when the program launched, we just say, send them our way. Just shoot them over to us and we'll handle it. And we do, we handle every customer call. A lot of them can take half an hour because people don't, people aren't used to something like this. I mean, they may be now in Pleasantville, but this, two and a half years ago, this was brand new. So people wanted to understand more about it, and we are happy to spend a half an hour on the phone with them and explain it. And more often than not, they walk away more comfortable with the choice that the municipality has made. And finally, you know, we will walk through people's bills. They say, I don't understand this, it's just delivery, the supply. We'll explain exactly what it is and how it all works. And finally, this is all our contact information. I would certainly encourage again that you put all of this on your website, just, Pleasantville has been in the program, so this won't be new to that, to a lot of folks. But if somebody's new into the town, they'll be getting this notification letter for the first time. And that's fine, they can just give us a call, and we're happy to help them. So thank you very much for giving us time in a very busy meeting, I'm sure.
Thank you for that. Just a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
One is, further discussion we had in work session. If we opt for the green default option, do we have the option, as I think we did the first time around, to work with Constellation about the content of the letter that is sent?
Yes.
So that we could get a Pleasantville-specific message that makes clear?
I'm going to ask my colleague, because she was here more at the beginning.
Okay.
I'm two months, two months too late. Go ahead. This is Jenna.
Good evening. The content of the notification letter will be partially guided by the Public Service Commission's recommendations and the things that Constellation has to say for the public's education. There is, there are some elements of the letter that we can influence, so if there's something important that you would like to communicate, please let us know so that we can let them.
I mean, the issue would be if we, who were previously, as we were, in the default, quote, "standard supply," and opt instead to go to default green, we'd want to make that point clear to people so that it had been, they had a reasonable opportunity to understand what's going on. Is that something we could make clear in the letter that Constellation sends, rather than going to the expense of sending another letter ourselves?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think we can do that.
Great.
I don't know if you're here for any part of the work session. We discussed it in fair detail, and, you know, we have concerns about the fact that, you know, opting green, when we first opted into this, I was able to justify in my mind switching somebody without their specific, hey, you know, I want to switch. Switching them because we were saving them money. And that, and to me, that justified it. I mean, you know, they could say, well, you took away my right to choose my own ESCO, but, you know, by switching me automatically. But on the other hand, you're saving money over what you had before, so it's a no harm, no foul action. It's a little different. We're going in the opposite direction. If we opt in green, it's slightly more expensive. It's about one quarter, one penny per kilowatt hour more expensive, which I calculate to be about 3%, give or take.
It comes to a few dollars a month at most.
And most is between one to two dollars.
I understand. And there's a philosophical problem that I have trying to justify opting somebody in automatically to have them spend a couple of dollars, even a nickel, even a little bit.
Right.
It's, you know, they're our community and they should be able to choose these things. On the other hand, it's so small
Yeah.
... that it's not hard for me to get there.
Right.
But I think it's important in our notification that we make it clear that we've made a change. We, the village, have made a change. And that they should, if they want to opt out, they should take action, you know, be, you know, very clear and very
Transparent.
Transparent about it, yeah.
Right. And to follow up with that idea, we are happy to visit any venue that you suggest, whether it's a senior center or a library, you know, another venue to talk to people about that. Additionally, while there's a difference between the green and the standard rate, with the green rate, folks are still saving money, so...
Saving money over ConEd.
Over ConEd's fluctuating rates.
But not over, not over standard energy under the program. You know, there's, so, and I do have one other question. Has Sustainable Westchester run any projections as to where they think the cost of green energy versus standard energy will go over the next several years? Because I can see that the delta between them is shrinking. There was a larger delta on this current contract versus what is coming up. There's a smaller delta. Does Sustainable Westchester projected that? Does it appear at any time in the foreseeable future that green, if we go in this direction, may at some point cost the same or maybe even less than standard?
The pricing that we received came from the wholesale marketplace that Constellation went out. went out to, and they received that pricing and came back to us. So we weren't projecting it. It's just what we received from the wholesale marketplace.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. So, do you know, you said about 1,900 residential customers in Pleasantville are in the program. Do you know, offhand, how many of them are green already?
Very few, because again, the human inertia being what it was, that's why the figures earlier, it's a very small percentage. Because again, most of us, I always say, flipping on the light switch. You don't ask a lot of questions.
Right.
If your power goes out, then you have some, then you pick up the phone, but you wouldn't be calling us, you'd be calling Con Ed. So what we have found is that in the communities, which is why we actually had two others that had been, sizable ones, Greenberg being one of them, switched from basic to green supply because they started looking at the numbers and the impact. And the financial differential was enough for them to say, and Rybert was the other one, was enough for them to say, it's just, it's time. I mean, again, the whole being the carbon footprint. So that's, that was the rationale for most of the
Good, thanks. And you said, we do the Village, or the fully green program is mandated to use 100% New York-generated hydroelectric power? Or is it just New York-sourced hydropower? And what I mean by that is, is that hydropower being bought from, say, Hydro Quebec through a New York purchaser? Or is it really generated by New York rivers and streams and dams and all that?
We'd be happy to clarify that for you. I believe it's New York-generated, but we'll be happy to go back and clarify that.
Okay, great. And my last question is, when you do the tons of CO2 saved, how is that, do you just know the factor offhand? Like how many tons of CO2 per kilowatt hour, or whatever that fraction is, and where that data comes from?
I would have to check that with our program director.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Number of people did the calculations, so...
Sorry, I just want to know where
That's okay. That's
Another question I get asked periodically is folks that are with another ESCO and are interested in switching, frequently aren't clear on what the small print was when they signed on, or whether there was an auto renewal that they didn't notice and all of that. With your, with your generous offer to have us post your phone numbers all over our website.
We're happy.
Are you in a position to help people navigate those questions when they really don't know what they have?
Yes, absolutely. It's important to understand, if somebody is out there and already has an ESCO, they're not going to get our letter.
Right.
Because they have an existing contract with somebody else.
Right.
We do get calls because, candidly, our rate is oftentimes better, and our terms are better. You can switch in and out, there's no penalty. So we get a lot of calls from people and say, I want to switch. My ESCO is now, there are some pretty absurd numbers.
Like the one I got in the direct mail piece, 12-point something.
Yeah, exactly. So what we do is we say, look, if you're in one of these, and we're happy to even look at the contract, know what your contract hands, and we'll work with you. Call us, we'll work through it. If it's in a month from now, that, before you go month to month, we'll help, we'll go through the process, look at the contract that they have, and then fold them into the program at a time that does not cause them any hardship.
Right. Because there may be an exit penalty, or you simply cannot get out.
There was one that had a $20 a month exit fee, up to $200 if you didn't, if you switched out within the first two, you know, 36 months.
You already said it, but worth reminding folks that the Sustainable Westchester program is easy in, easy out, no penalty, no commitment, no contract, no nothing, so...
Correct. It's just a benefit of being a part of the program.
And in exchange for that, you get consistent rates for the next two years, unlike your Con Ed supply, which spikes with higher rates.
We like to say fluctuates.
I said spikes, which I think is not unfair. I'm not hitting on them, but the point is, you're being charged a market rate, and at periods of time when there's very high demand and high rates, you pay higher rates. In this case, it's the level rate across the entire year, so that obviously people's utility usage changes month to month, depending on what they're running. But not only is the lack of any penalty for changing horses a great thing, but the stable rates over a 24-month period is something you cannot get most places.
I know that anybody who is with Con Ed now, who is being switched over into the program because of that, will get a notification. Is everybody who's already in the program going to get the notification? They should.
Yes, it's a renewal, so everyone will receive information about the next contract period.
And the availability of opt-out.
Yeah.
Of course, absolutely.
With our phone number.
We're opting out of green into standard or whatever.
Yes.
So everybody gets a letter except folks that are with a different ESCO.
Right.
Right.
All right. Any other questions? I thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice presentation. Great to have it. Good work. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further comment on that? Anybody want to make a comment on that subject before we go to resolutions? Enter and give us your name and address, even though we already know.
Sure. My name is Ben Serabin, 44 Sun. While I am for the whole green program, I am actually not for 100% hydro. I would rather see them using other solar and wind, so...
That wasn't an option given them by the state?
No, I know. That's my only concern about this program. So like, the Esquamen actually does hydro, wind, and solar. So that's just something to think about in the future. Obviously, they have a two-year contract, but that's just...
Can you illuminate why?
Yeah, no, I mean, the hydro, it affects a lot of the fish.
Right.
And so that's the concern, and also the transmission. So I think most of the hydro is coming from Niagara Falls. And so that was one of the things I also wanted to mention. When I was up in Buffalo, their electricity rates for supply, I think when I looked at my buddy's electric bill, was 3.5 cents. So obviously...
Because they're right there.
Because they're right there.
They have a paddle wheel right out there.
Yeah, so it's, it makes a big difference. But that was my only concern about the 100% hydro. But overall, I mean, clearly, it's better than the standard approach, so...
He's not advocating that everyone move to Buffalo.
No, I'm not.
I like Buffalo, but I want you to stay here.
Yes. And thank you for supporting.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other comment?
Hello, Helen Muir, 3 Hay Hill Road. Actually, I second Ben Serabin's comment. I have concerns about hydro, and there is some talk of bringing cables down the Hudson to bring hydropower from Canada, which is a whole other fish interruption problem. So, and our current one is wind, I think, through this CCA. And I have a letter similar to mayor's shares from Clean Choice Energy for 14.7 cents per kilowatt.
Which is literally double.
Yeah. So I think one of the things that the village can, should do, is somehow get information out about what all of our energy choices are. I know people who I ordinarily think are quite clued into what's going on in the village, but they did not know, they were in a CCA, they did not know there was an option to change it to a different type of energy. And so it's very hard to find this stuff out, you know, unless you're actually very, very involved in the village. And I think somehow we need to get the information out so that when we get these letters, and I get about one every two weeks, we know we're not supposed to leap on it and say, oh, oh, clean energy, I should do that.
Right.
Because you're going to lose members from the aggregated energy, and you're going to affect the rates going down the road, so...
So we obviously are not in a position to comment specifically about any third-party's offer, but certainly makes sense. I would say, and we need to press this, but part of it has to do with human nature, we're all getting too much mail. At the time of the original CCA plan, everybody got a letter, and that letter came with a return address, Village of Pleasantville, 80 Wheeler Avenue. Clearly not a marketing thing. So everybody who's in the plan got that letter, and inside that letter had the option to find out what was going on, and also to opt out if they wanted to. So they're going to get another such letter with this new renewal. And obviously, we should keep encouraging people to be aware of what they're in for, not only for the reason you described, which is to avoid them getting swindled into a rate that is far higher, but also from the standpoint of understanding what we're doing and how it all works.
Right. So it could be on the website, like, where does our energy come from?
So the westchesterpower.org, the Sustainable Westchester site, has all that data, and what we ought to have there is a link on our site, which we'll do.
Right. And we can use social media as well, and other outlets
Yeah.
But a way to look it up. You know, it's very, very hard to find out what's going on.
I mean, honestly, among the benefits, further to discussion we had when it all started is, up until now, you were either in the comforting or less than comforting hands of Con Ed, and had to trust what they did, or you were in the world of free-market ESCOs, where it was very, very difficult for a consumer to understand what they were being offered, since the, the power differential was strongly in favor of the offerer. They know all about power and what to say to you to get you to buy their option. And the consumer, honestly, it's, you know, who knows? You could spend a lot of hours trying to figure it out. The advantage of the CCA thing is now we have this membership community of 42, 42 members out of 45 in Sustainable Westchester that has provided the expert advice, and I think residents are justified in feeling as though thoughtful people have made thoughtful decisions on a subject that's hard for the average person to figure out.
Right. But our bills look the same. They still say Con Ed on the front. So I think just somehow, if we have on the village website, do you know?
Yeah, I agree.
This is how we get our energy. And also, so, and obviously, I'm voting for green if there's a vote from the audience.
Understood. All right. Any, Edwin?
Hi, Edwin Quo, 44 Orchard Street. I just want to follow up on my question that came out of the work session. You know, if, as a member of the Climate Smart Communities Task Force, you know, we are working towards certifying Village Pleasantville as a climate smart community. And as part of that, you know, we're looking at the government buildings and the government operations, and the carbon footprint, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, as part, as part of this conversation, as we look at what, what the residents are going to be getting, I would like to hope that, you know, this can be a part of the conversation from the village side, and that the village can start looking at the green options as well. So as a whole, the village, government, the buildings, and the residents are all operating on their green energy.
Thank you for that. As mentioned in the work session, we get most of our power through the New York Power Authority. And Eric, you can dig into that on our end and see exactly what options might exist, and what our options are down the road. Are municipalities, if they were legally allowed to from all the other aspects, able to opt into the CCA plan?
No, they cannot. I'm sorry, that's a question. No, they cannot.
So the answer, just for those who couldn't hear, is that municipalities cannot themselves opt into the CCA plan. And there are probably seven other reasons why we can't peel ourselves away from the New York Power Authority, and maybe seven reasons why we shouldn't, but let's dig into it a little. All right. Any further comment?
I have a quick question. You guys are going to hate me. So off on the Con Ed website, and I'm trying to find what their current price is right now. Does anybody know that off the top of their head? You guys know what Con Ed's date, like, if I signed up for Con Ed today?
Calum has a bill there. Is that current?
The interesting, oh, come on.
Yeah.
Sure, thanks.
The interesting part about Con Ed is that
Just wait till you get to the mic, because I already heard it.
The interesting part about Con Ed is you and I can live next door to each other and have completely different rates.
Right.
So it depends on your billing cycle. So that's why Con Ed never puts up their rates. What we did when we calculated for the benchmark, we had to do an average that took all of this to come up with that benchmark. And it's also something that is important to understand about the Con Ed rates is, they will just give you the rate, but it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Because when you look at your standard Con Ed bill, not in the CCA, you have, there are additional charges, like merchant function charge, and there's another one, I'm drawing a blank on right now. So when you're a Con Ed default customer for both delivery and supply, they have this box that tries to come close to what you were paying per kilowatt hour.
Okay.
So that's the closest you can come, but the only way you can do that is to actually go in manually and put your information in, your billing cycle, your address, and then, even then, I do not believe they calculate the merchant function charge and the other additional charges.
Further, the Con Ed numbers are very widely based on the time of year.
Oh, of course.
And day even, apparently.
Right. So the result is, you could look at the bill you get in a relatively low overall demand month and say, oh, well, this is cheaper, appears to be cheaper than I am paying through the CCA plan. But when Con Ed comes to a high demand month, your rate spikes well above. So the issue is average, and we have that 12-month trailing average in your data there.
Yeah.
I believe I provided that, that the first, correct.
That's in here.
And it's also in our backup on the, on the work session.
It was probably, it was part of my first presentation. I didn't bring the indicative pricing information for this, because the contract
Do you have a Con Ed bill there?
According to this, you know, this little spreadsheet you gave us, it says a 36-month trailing average, 24-month, and the 12-month, all around 8.26. 36 months is a little bit lower, 8.06. But 12-month trailing average was 8.26 cents per hour, per kilowatt hour.
All right, right, right. Thank you.
So we're in a pretty good position here.
Yeah, but then there's 3.9, 3.01.
Yeah, but what time period is that?
It's from September 1st to October 31st.
Right. Which means that, I assume, in that particular month, that's a low-rate month, because people have stopped using electric, air conditioning.
Air conditioning, have turned the heat on.
They have turned the heat on, at least not in a big way.
All right. So let me bring it back to January.
Again, the average that we do factors that in. So you have the months that are three, and the others that are 14 or something.
Right. So...
Well, well, I mean, they have, they have
I'm sure you're not getting the whole number.
Not, not to advocate, because Steve, I agree with you, I see your point, no, but there's an average. I mean, they didn't make up the number.
I'm just curious, really. I'm not trying to prove the point.
I'm just letting you know that, because, hey, if you want to opt out for those months that you think are going to be less, you can do that.
Switch your supplier.
It's kind of like hedging in the stock market. I don't know why people would do it, but I'm just saying.
Is there an app for that?
We'll get back to you on that.
I don't know if you wanted to see what is on your bill.
I was going to say, I have a Con Ed bill, but I'm on the green energy plan, so I don't have any clue what kind of choosing. Oh, they actually charge more per kilowatt hour to deliver it than the actual energy itself costs.
Yes.
And that number prevails no matter where you get your power, so...
Yes.
Right. Definitely. It doesn't even impact on the program.
Painfully, the discussion alone makes clear how difficult it is for the average person to decide what's a reasonable thing to do. So, speaking for myself, I can say with confidence that, for my own purposes, both as a residential customer and as a small commercial customer, I have benefited from the CCA program. And now, as a small commercial customer, I appear likely to benefit even more. That was a recent bill for my office.
Where is it? There it is.
8.16, plus all this other stuff.
Yours, this is commercial, though, right?
Yes. All right. Any further comment? Okay. Any further comment from the public on any subject at all? Our call-in number, 769-1677. Makes us lonely when the phone doesn't ring. All right. Let's go to the resolutions. Nicole?
We resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the retirement of Lead Maintenance Mechanic Automotive Salvatore Mazulo, effective October 16th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sal is a long, long, longstanding employer of the Village of Pleasantville, a former, I think, two, two terms as Fire Chief in the Village of Pleasantville. And we wish him all the best in his retirement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Two twenty-six, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of School Crossing Guard Alfred Paresia effective October twenty-six, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, moving out of the area. Thank you for your service. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Two twenty-seven, Joe.
Whereas sealed bids were publicly advertised in the village, I'm sorry, in the official village newspaper and received on October tenth, two thousand eighteen for the Foxwood Tennis Court Rehabilitation Project. And whereas bids were received as per the following, Sport Tech Acrylics for twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars now therefore be a resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Public Works hereby awards the bid for the Foxwood Tennis Courts Rehabilitation Project to Sport Tech Acrylics Brewster, New York in the amount of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Bid proposal is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Eric, you want to describe this, and also, if you could touch on, a number of people have inquired about whether, at the same time, the tennis courts get striped, whether in a contrasting color the lines for pickleball could be striped?
So to that point, no. Pickleball will not be incorporated into this rehab project. We are offering pickleball at the basketball court near the pool.
But on a temporary basis?
On a temporary basis. So we can look into making that more permanent based on usage. But in this particular, and there will be opportunity to, I believe, temporarily re-stripe the tennis courts for pickleball moving forward. But this project is to strictly just rehab the existing tennis court, which is in dire straits.
Refinish, new surface, re-stripe.
Yep.
So just to play devil's advocate, what's the downside of, in a contrasting color, striping the different lines for pickleball? I mean, I know next to nothing about pickleball.
Right. It's a, it's a bit of a smaller court. The lines get confusing with the, with the regulation tennis court. But we can look into, again, doing it on a temporary basis. In terms of the budget for this, we have in a fund forty-five thousand dollars. So this comes in under budget. We're excited to see that. And this bidder has a great reputation, has done projects in Bedford and City New Pulse as well, so.
Okay. So just, I leave it in your hands. It strikes me that if tennis lines are white and pickleball lines are yellow, is that distracting?
That'd be super confusing.
I cannot imagine that tennis players are going to like that very much.
Well, since I am neither a tennis player nor a pickleball player, it sounds like my comments are likely to inflame both of them, so. On a green court? I don't know. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Two twenty-eight, David.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes from Village Ward Meeting on October eighth, two thousand eighteen. Minutes attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Two twenty-nine, Nicole.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to execute a revocable license agreement with Randall and Christine Moore to Iroquois Road for the purpose of replacing a retaining wall in the village's right-of-way.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is along Nana Hagan. And the only thing I would add to that is, if perhaps the revocable license agreement could ask that the Moors or anyone who might own that house in the future be also responsible for making sure that the narrow space between the road and the retaining wall is free for passage of pedestrians. I think that's what the Moors have typically done, but it would be nice to sort of memorialize that. If the shrubbery starts to overtop the retaining wall, it diminishes the narrow, the already narrow space for folks to walk.
Good idea.
I agree. I just walked that road this morning. There's not a lot of space.
On a good day, right?
Yeah.
All right. Is that acceptable to the mover and the seconder?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Two thirty, Steve.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village mayor to sign the personnel contract for the village police chief, Eric Grubstner, retroactive to June first, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Eric, this essentially modifies the benefits to allow Eric to be part of the PBA Well Care Program.
Correct.
And in no other respect does it bind the village other than what we have already signed.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Joe, number two thirty-one.
Whereas all jurisdictions within Westchester County have exposure to natural hazards that increase the risk to life, property, environment, and the county and local economy. And whereas proactive mitigation of known hazards before disaster event can reduce or eliminate long-term risk of life and property. And whereas the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, Public Law one oh six dash three ninety, established new requirements for the pre and post-disaster hazard mitigation programs. And whereas a coalition of Westchester County municipalities with like planning objectives has been formed to pool resources and create consistent mitigation strategies within Westchester County. And whereas the coalition has completed a planning process that engages the public, assesses the risk and vulnerability, I'm sorry, and the vulnerability to the impacts of natural hazards, develops a mitigation strategy consistent with a set of uniform goals and objectives, and creates a plan for the implementing, evaluating, and revising this strategy. Now therefore be a resolve that the Village of Pleasantville One adopts in its entirety the two thousand fifteen Westchester County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the jurisdiction's natural hazard mitigation plan, and resolves to execute the actions identified in the plan that pertain to this jurisdiction. Number two, it will use the adopted and approved portions of the plan to guide pre and post-disaster mitigation of hazards identified. Number three, it will coordinate the strategies identified in the plan with other planning programs and mechanisms under its jurisdictional authority. Number four, will continue to support the mitigation, I'm sorry, the mitigation plan committee as described within the plan. Number five, will help to promote and support the mitigation successes of all participants in this plan. Number six, will incorporate a mitigation planning, will incorporate mitigation planning as an integral component of government and partner operations. Number seven, will provide an update of the plan in conjunction with the county no less than every five years. The fiscal year two thousand eighteen Hazard Mitigation Plan is attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Perhaps you should read that again for clarity.
Did my best.
A storm of words there. No pun intended. So Eric, am I correct that we've participated in the plan development and this is the next step to have FEMA give us the stamp of approval?
Correct. So the village had developed and submitted a plan in two thousand fifteen but did not formally adopt it. So now that we're formally adopting this plan, makes us eligible for some FEMA grants.
All a good thing. And let me also say that this storm of words, put together by the folks at the Office of Emergency Management of the county, and having participated with them in any number of workshops and tabletop exercises and quite a few conference calls during emergency conditions, those folks are first-class and really, really do a great job. And I shout out to them. It is a prime example of a shared service where the parent county is able to provide resources to all the forty-five municipalities that they could not provide for themselves in any kind of a reasonable way. So thank you to the Office of Emergency Management. Any comments or questions on the Unified Hazard Mitigation Grant Program? That would be the UH MGP. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Two thirty-two, David.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the services agreement with the Student Assistant Services Corporation for support services to the Pleasantville Strong Community Coalition for a fee not to exceed forty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars in the period September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, through September twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Agreement attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Eric, this is funded by the Pleasantville Strong annual federal grant?
Yes, correct. It's federal money, helps fund Pleasantville Strong's technical support.
So, as some of you may already know, obviously, Pleasantville Strong is a community coalition effort that's funded by a multi-year federal grant. But the Village of Pleasantville is the official grant recipient, and all of the monies that were received by, from the feds and then spent on these services flow through us.
Correct.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Nicole, two thirty-three.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village mayor to sign the Community Choice Aggregation Electric Service Agreement, two thousand nineteen Con Ed Contract Draft V One, and further resolves that the Village of Pleasantville has chosen one hundred percent renewable clean power, green energy, as the default product for its residents and businesses.
Is there a second?
Second.
So those of you who are watching saw the presentation by Sustainable Westchester and the discussion we had, and various members of the board commenting on the issue of whether we should choose the default standard rate or the default green rate. Just to put a point on that, go back to the, to the actual rates. Did you have that PDF up? I can find it. Yeah. You want to just read off those, David, to remind people what the rates are?
Sure. Under the current contract, the residential standard rate is seven dollars and seventy cents. Residential
Seven, seven point seven.
Sorry, seven point seven cents.
Seven cents per kilowatt hour.
Per kilowatt hour. And residential green rate is eight cents per kilowatt hour. Over the last year, the Con Ed rate was approximately eight point two six cents per kilowatt hour. So both are below under the current contract. The commercial rates under the current contract were nine point nine three cents for standard, nine point nine seven cents per green. Under the new contract, the residential standard rate will be seven point seven one cents, so one, one hundredth of a cent more for residential standard, and seven point nine six cents for residential green, which is actually four tenths of a hundredth of a cent below the previous rate. And the commercial standard rates will be same for standard and for green as for residential standard and green, which is significantly below the old commercial rates.
Great. So what we have before us is a resolution that authorizes us to renew our participation in the program. I think that we are all in agreement about that. And the secondary component of it says that unlike the circumstance when we first, in the first round of contract, when we elected the standard energy as the default product, this resolution proposes that we choose the hundred percent renewable energy as the default product. And as we heard from Sustainable Westchester, that is generated by the state requirements this year to be generated from New York sources using hydro power. So, comments on the resolution before us?
Steve? Why are you all looking at me?
I can go first if you want.
Well, maybe we should just all go down the line and offer their comments.
Sure.
Start with Nicole.
Now, which end do we start on?
I'm ready. Well?
Yep.
We'll go randomly.
I support moving to the default green energy plan. There's been a lot of discussion about the, the different aspects of this. Happily, the difference between the standard brown energy and green energy is shrinking so that it's a relatively small difference between the two. And I believe that this is a move that makes sense for the values of our community as represented by, for example, by the Climate Smart Community Task Force, of which I am the representative on, for the village board. I think I'm just gonna leave it there.
Me?
Yeah, might as well just go down the line.
All right. So during the work session, we talked a little bit, or I talked a little bit about how I, I have a hard time moving to increased cost, however minor it may be, based on a choice that we may be taking away from people. But I'm rationalizing my positive vote for this resolution, which hopefully makes people happy, with the secure, I guess is the right way to put it, secure in the knowledge that at the end of the day, everybody has to do whatever they can to make sure we have a planet in a couple of years. So that's, I'll leave it with that.
Joe?
Yeah, I also sort of struggled with this a little bit because the idea of having to have somebody opt out of the more expensive program to the less expensive program, the standard electricity versus green, I find that, you know, difficult to do from a governance standpoint. But there were some mitigating factors, and that is, yes, the delta between the cost of standard energy and green energy under the program has gotten smaller. The more people that use green, hopefully will bring the cost of green down even more. So maybe in three years, when we renew again, the delta will be even smaller. So in the long run, there will be a cost, more of a cost savings, and at the same time, helping to preserve our planet. And the other thing I thought was really good was that the green energy is sourced one hundred percent from New York State, which actually helps our state in a number of ways. There's an economic benefit to the state. There's an ecological benefit to the state that we can all benefit from. So the small difference in, in cost, I felt, was outweighed by those positive factors. So I'm going to be a yes vote as well.
David?
Yeah, I think, you know, effectively, when we choose a default option, we're making a choice for the community. And though anyone who feels strongly can change the default option, very few people actively do. So we have to make the best choice. As stewards for the community, we are making choices, you know, I think our job is basically to take all the individual decisions that we make, that make our life easier but sometimes aren't good for our community, whether that is cutting across the middle of the street instead of the intersection, which we know can have traffic consequences, to not doing the thing that helps the environment in the long term. And by taking this very small action, which has a very small price, our individual small actions could actually add up to some significant consequences for the positive, for the environment, and importantly, to reduce pollution in, in our state. So I think that's something that we ought to do. So my vote is yes.
Can I just add, it might make sense to read the statistic that Sustainable Westchester gave us, which is that had we chosen the default green to begin with, we would have avoided consuming approximately eight thousand eight hundred tons of carbon dioxide. So just to give that figure as well into the mix.
I too will vote yes. That makes us unanimous. I just want to make clear to folks that what government, the, I think it was something like seventeen municipalities initially in the first round with, with Sustainable Westchester, banded together to try to deliver to their constituents another choice. And what that meant is, for the first time, when we opted into this plan, you had the choice to remain with Con Ed as your supplier, recognizing that the delivery piece and the billing piece and the wires and, and poles remain with Con Ed no matter what. We delivered you the option to stay with Con Ed, the option to go with any one of the alternative energy suppliers that you may have encountered through direct mail or table at the grocery store, whatever it might have been. Now adding to that mix, yet another option, which was to believe that those seventeen communities and the forty-two communities that are banded together to represent Sustainable Westchester have done a thoughtful job of trying to aggregate this demand and get a good price. Two years later, we now know that that was exactly what happened. Anybody who did not opt out was automatically put into the CCA plan. And the first year in Pleasantville, they, two years in Pleasantville, they were in the default standard power supply. And you saved money. So had you taken action and said, I don't want to go into this program, I want to stay with Con Ed, we now know that that would have cost you modestly more money. Had you gone with any other alternative energy supplier, you would have been on your own in what is admittedly a little bit of a Wild West environment where it's very, very hard to determine whether you're getting a good deal and what you have signed on for and whether you have a contract commitment. So the bottom line here is that the price of going to one website, westchesterpower.org, or responding to the letter that you receive with the contact renewal, you have all of these choices. You can stay with CCA. You could, if, as you are about to see, we choose the default green option, you can stay with that, and you will still pay modestly less than you would have paid if you had done nothing and stayed with Con Ed. Or if you choose, you want to save a couple of bucks a month and the green supply is not important to you, all you have to do is go onto the website and opt for the different options. So at the price of an opt-in, which is, I'm afraid, the reality that it is very, very hard to get a reasonable number of folks to pay attention to this, here's what we're offering you. Seventeen governments have ratified this program. The folks that run Sustainable Westchester essentially work for all of us. We've been impressed by their professionalism. And I am happy to vote in favor of the program again, and happy to vote in favor of the default green. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we have it. We've done it. Two thirty-four. We should, let's, let's pull two thirty-four.
Thank you.
Our original agenda included a resolution to participate in concept with an effort to challenge the federal limitations on state and local taxes. We intended to discuss that further in work session and did not get to it. So we'll pull that.
I think we need to chew on that a little bit.
Yes, and we'll put that on for the next regular session where we have a chance to work on it. So we'll renumber. Two thirty-five is now two thirty-four.
Me?
You, yes.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby suspends parking meter fees for the time allowed on one, two, and three-hour meter allowed on one, two, and three-hour meters from Friday, November twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, through Tuesday, December twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is an annual request from the Chamber of Commerce. We are happy to participate. The meters all get bags over the top, and you can't put money in them even if you tried, but those bags remind you that time limits still apply. So you get a free hour at an hour meter, but you don't get a free hour and a half, and you're at risk of getting a ticket if you don't move the car.
In past years, didn't we do it through the end of the week?
There has been discussion about that. It is difficult to continue that. First off, there's the economic loss, and secondly, the time period when our folks can get out and take the bags off the meters. What did the chamber ask for?
Do they, they wanted?
Through the twenty-sixth, which really is through the twenty-fifth.
Right, yeah, so they did not ask for the next week.
No.
So.
And last year, this is what was approved as well.
Right.
No, 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 on the twenty-sixth, it's okay, I mean, it's a day.
I mean, our guys come out on the twenty-sixth, then take the bags off.
In the morning, they take the bags off.
So.
I just, I just recall that we did it through whatever, like.
That has happened on occasion.
It could fall on different days, but it could, it could be the end of the week, you know, just to.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we take a significant revenue loss from it, so.
All right, leave it alone.
All right. All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Joe, two thirty-six.
Resolved that the pre-check register dated October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, covering check numbers nine one two six six to nine one three seven nine, is hereby approved as listed below, in the general fund, the water fund, the capital fund, and the refuse fund, for a total of three hundred twenty-four thousand, twenty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions about the check register? What is Hubbard's cupboard? And why do we owe them two hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-six cents?
Hubbard's cupboard. That's our new vendor for the senior center, Meals on Wheels.
Ah, yes, I forgot the name, yes.
That's a lot of value right there for them.
Yeah.
Exactly.
All right, thank you, Hubbard's Cupboards. Any further questions? All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. Two thirty-seven. David?
Resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to execute a revocable license agreement with Robert Purster, one forty Sarls Lane, for the purpose of legalizing an existing unpermitted parking space in the village right-of-way, and further resolves, refer such application to the Planning Commission for further review.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have backup. Everyone has approved. Derek?
Yep, now, so this is an interesting situation, part of a wider issue the village is grappling with, but this particular resident is located on a street that is not permitted to have this right-of-way parking, but has it already paved? It's been in existence for a long time. He's looking to pave his driveway, and while he's at it, he'd like to repave his, his right-of-way parking. By code, how this has unfolded in the past is the village board grants a license agreement and then goes to Planning Commission for final approval. And they take that on a case-by-case basis as to whether to approve it or not. But the village should start moving forward with a more comprehensive plan, how to deal with these as they come in. And the building department has already started to go out and take an accounting of how many of this right-of-way parking we have in the village. I think there's a hundred and thirty-four.
Oh, yeah.
And they're going to go back and see which ones have been legalized over the years.
Yeah, and so if you don't recall this, where I live, the Hall Brothers came and ripped out a section of our lawn and driveway, but then in order to, to put it back, we actually had to get a revocable license agreement.
So it was fine until they dug it up.
And this is what led the man to run for office?
Any year when our three next, our cross-street neighbor, cross-street to the right, and our next-door neighborhood all repaved without, you know, these illegal strips.
Without asking, right.
Yeah, without asking, so.
So, I mean, the, the one point that.
I think it's good that they're going out and figuring.
A lot of folks don't realize is that the village generally owns some right-of-way on both sides of most roads. It's not always an even amount on both sides, and in some places it's very wide, and in some places it's very narrow, but it's almost certainly the case that your front yard is, as it approaches the edge of the road, turns into public property, and you don't have the affirmative right to, to build something in it. So more on that as it develops, but this has been through the approval process with planning?
No, so now it would be.
It'll go to planning.
Yeah, you're, you're referring it to planning.
All right.
So they're going to have a public hearing? Does the planning board have a public hearing on these things?
Yes.
So if any, any neighbors don't like it, they can come out in that form and state their.
And is it typically our practice that we allow these to be legalized if they've been there a long time?
Well, if, if they, if they're located on a permitted street, we grant the license agreement.
The code, back long before our time, twenty-five years ago or so, was amended to identify specific streets where this would be entertained because of the clear problems. Washington Avenue is one of them because in a significant part of the length, folks have extraordinarily steep driveways, either downhill or up. And there are a lot of those pre-existing items, but Sarls is not one of them, so, you know, recognize that it, it's a piece of the code that exists in order to keep people from paving pieces of their front yard.
And in the food of that, you included, if you look at the, I think it's, which one is it, number two?
Image two.
Is it image two? Yeah, no, image one, sorry. It looks like in the background there, there's two more.
Right.
Cars just either parked on dirt or grass.
Yeah, but the blue one's on pavement.
Right.
What are the terms of the revocable aspect of the?
Well, that simply says, if the village ever decides it wants you to get off its property, it can tell you to.
So in a scenario where, say, we wanted to put a sidewalk in?
Right.
Right.
Or, or just, we just don't like it anymore. I mean, you know, to be honest, it's not the most attractive thing in the world, I mean.
Right, and what stops the guy next door from saying, hey, I want that too?
Right, and technically, anyone can park in that spot.
I mean, the house next door, the greenhouse next door has, has grass out front, and it looks nice, you know, so.
I mean, folks, obviously, especially, for example, on Washington Avenue, where you see a lot of them, imagine understandably that it's their parking space, but in fact, anyone can park it. So, and the problem gets even more complicated, especially in a circumstance like on the low side of, of Washington Avenue, where some of those parking pads are held up by retaining walls that are at some point going to fail, so.
The interesting thing with image one, of course, is there's no parking sign that's right in front of the car.
That, it goes to planning.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. That's the end of our regular resolutions. Any new business, new comments? Comments from the public? Comments from administrative staff?
Only, only that we're hoping to pave Marble Avenue next Monday and Tuesday nights.
And any word yet on Bedford Road?
Bedford Road is a Con Ed project on a county road. We've been in touch with the county. They are in agreement that it needs to be repaved or put in a condition that's better than it's currently in.
I mean, it's impossible right now.
It's awful. It's awful. And there are.
At least you like bumps.
There are standards that Con Ed has to abide by before they leave it over the winter, so.
So does the, the tea leaves suggest that it's not going to get milled and repaved in time and that?
I mean, they got to move if they want to get it.
Right, exactly. So it's looking like some, some work will be done on it to make it better, but.
Also, what happened to Wheeler Avenue? I was notified at my office that over one night, there was going to be no parking and there was going to be repaving.
Right, the contractor was unable to come.
Yeah.
The notice we gave for the businesses there was really, whoa, I mean, it was a day or two, right? Tops?
Yeah, but it was overnight. For me, it was okay, it was.
But it was a Friday night.
Yeah, it was, so what's been happening is this paving contractor won the bid for the town and the village, and it's the first time he's worked on municipal roads, apparently. And the weather has not been kind. All the rain that we've gotten delays, delays his paving schedule, so he's also won bids in other municipalities. So he's been scheduled, and he's scheduled himself out every time he's been delayed. And he had us scheduled for Wheeler Avenue on a Friday night, which we will not attempt to do again.
Good.
But it, it all fell apart on him, so not ideal. And Wheeler may be repaved again. We're going to make sure Marble gets it done as a priority. If there is time, we're going to do it, and if we're going to do it, it's going to be on a Monday or Tuesday night.